So I'd like to call this the November park and rec Atherton Park and Rec meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Can Sally, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, I sir.
Here.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Walt is absent, Julie Robertson is absent, and Roser.
Okay, welcome back, Bob. We'll get the introduction soon enough in five A. So I'd like to open up for any public comments. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? And I don't know if there's anyone in the room, Sally, or anyone online, if you're.
There's one person in the room.
Okay. Would that person like to provide any public comment for anything not on the agenda?
Oh, she's here for pickleball.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone online that would like to provide public comment for anything not on the agenda? They can raise your hand if you are interested. If not, we will move on to the next item. Seeing none. Let's move on to item three, which was is the approval of minutes. So we got a trifecta of minutes from the last three months of meetings. And I bet all of you have reviewed them in much detail and would like to know if anyone has and we've provided comments to Sally in terms of the changes. For these amended minutes, are there any additional comments?
No moves.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Are I? Any opposition or abstentions?
No.
Nope. Okay, it sounds like the minutes we've approved unanimously. No presentations this month. And why don't we move on to the regular agenda? Introducing Bob Roser, old new face that we've had before. Bob, is there is there anything you'd like to say to introduce yourself to the committee or anything you want to point out about yourself?
Yeah, I never missed a chance to make comments. I wanted to first say that I have been once in a while looking at what Park and Rec was doing because the park is such a special place for all of us. And I like to keep track of it. I have to say that the groups that have managed this, I think have made a lot of progress. I think you get into a lot of things that needed to be, you know, talked about. So I wanted to just congratulate everybody from my view that the Park and Rec committee is doing a good job for Atherton. You know.
Thank you, Bob, and we hope that your input for the next few years will also be very, very helpful for making the park even.
I hope so.
Sally, has Rick arrived?
Yes, Rick is.
Okay, excellent, excellent. So why don't we move to five B, a topic that probably will have a lot of opinions and a lot of discussion. The pickleball trial proposal. I know the subcommittee has been working on it. So why don't we hear from them to understand what is the proposal they'd like to make?
Okay, hi. So we've put together, so that we as the subcommittee, Chris, Julie, and myself came together and took on the work that had been started by a prior subcommittee. And so we took that material and then got together and put together what a potential pickleball trial would look like and what are the different parameters? What are constraints? What are recommendations? What are some issues? And so this was meant to be a potential proposal for a trial and let the larger committee and the public have input on it. And then I, from what I understand is at that point, we could decide or it can be decided to be taken up by the town council who will make the final decision on it. So we did talk to various stakeholders. This actually began with the prior subcommittee and then continued us. We looked if we go through that document recommending parameters for a trial, soliciting public opinion and thinking about how do we assess demand if we do run a trial? How do we know if it's working or not, as well as, you know, talking about what are potential issues that are clearly evident that will go through in this deck? But just and don't have page numbers on this. Can we skip two more pages? If we look at the courts, just for everybody to have a common vocabulary, there are six courts, five of which are the hard court and number three is the clay court, which was not considered because clay is not a viable surface for pickleball at this point, especially in the condition that the clay court is in.
The other thing, the clay court can't be played tennis on either.
That is another thing, although it was recently redone and was it any I what? When we did a walkthrough of the courts or well, we went through walk through the park month and a half ago, they had recently redone some of the clay court and they were hoping that it might be in better shape, but I.
It can't be fixed.
Okay, well, that's it.
It cannot be fixed.
Okay.
For for tennis.
For tennis, well.
You can go out and you can observe on it. You can put young kids on it if you don't. But it's for a normal tennis player. You can't play on it.
Okay, thank you. So um and maybe this isn't the best order of the deck, but we did come up with some. If we were to do a trial, this is what we would do on or this is how we thought we could structure this. The idea would be to put the the trial on tennis court number six, which is if you think of it closest to home plate of the little league and as well as furthest from the the homes that are in Felton Gables. We thought a timeframe of three to four months with the potential to extend would be good to assess is their demand. You know, three to four, six months could be viable. At that point, hopefully, we would have enough information to say, you know, let's look at a permanent or not, you know, let's end this trial. We could make out of one tennis court, we could make four pickleball courts. While it's not ideal, it'd be probably ideal to have maybe three on a tennis court in terms of having extra room. You can put four on and you can't put three on a temporary court because the tennis poles are there. So it really, you either can really do two or four. And so the group thought probably four makes the most sense.
I'm going to jump in because there's some I have some other input and when you get to it, jump in.
Please. Court availability, the thought would be it'd be one court that would be kind of reserved for pickleball during the trial. We had other, we had other thoughts on, you know, let's do it certain number of hours like sunrise to 2:00 PM, certain days. But one thought was maybe it's best to be consistent during the trial like we would be, you know, going going forward. During the trial, we didn't think a cost to players or a key system would make sense. As we're doing this as a trial to gauge interest. We we believe there would be a cost to town mostly for dual striping, which we put at four to 5,000 and a little bit of class instructor. One of our thoughts is as a subcommittee was it's not just, you know, people aren't just going to show up at the courts for no reason without any marketing as well as we thought we'd bring more people in if we had some like introductory classes. So that's the next couple of things as well as pickleball isn't quite like our tennis system where you reserve courts. Pickleball is much more of a drop in activity. It's more like some people would say it's more like pickup basketball. And so a reservation system doesn't doesn't often fit and most towns are not doing reservation systems. Some are, but most of them are more drop in style. The next slide would show the how, you know, a somewhat rendering of a 60 by 120 tennis court that is at court number six and how you would put the pickleball lines on it. The next slide is really where we start in some of the issues and.
Nathan, on the layout of the course, would that mean that there would be 16 players on the tennis court?
Thirty-two if it were doubles.
I know, sixteen, four times, four times, four times, four, sixteen, sixteen people. If it was full, yes.
And so would the thing be that if you come to play, you get to play?
That's that's how.
Pardon?
Yeah, I do think there is a difference. Some people do reservations. Some people don't. We don't have to make that decision now. But I think it's I think there's a diversity of opinion. Some people think if I'm going to get myself all ready, I want to be sure I can play.
I'm just trying to understand how often 16 people will be coming at one time and 16 people leaving, putting 32 cars going through the parking lot.
Right. And we do identify parking as an issue. I think it is much more. You would likely have a set of people that would be there and people kind of roll in and roll out. You wouldn't have 16 in, 16 out. It's more of a thing where, you know, of course, multiple people might come together and things like that. But they, the benefit to the community is that you can, if you're a pickleball player, if you're a single person and you just want to play pickleball, you can show up and find friends to play pickleball with. If you go with two people, you know, you could play together against others. Or, you know, if you go to as a foursome, generally what happens is you kind of maybe start off playing together and then you get broken up and you play with other people and you meet other people. So that's kind of.
Leave at different times.
Yeah. But but parking, it is brought up in the deck as a potential issue.
Yeah, I was just concerned. There's a lot of cars going past the school.
Right. So the biggest or one issue is certainly noise. And we brought it up here. This is a, I don't know, a chart I cut from some other things, but diversity of opinions on noise, but it's a fact that pickleball noise is louder than tennis noise.
And I think it's also not even just the the decibels, but it's the nature of the noise, which is a much sharper sound. And also, it's one of the one thing that's happening since this is going on everywhere. And this is pickleball is happening and it's a great game and people enjoy playing it is the amount of noise and the fact that it's constant boom, 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 boom. We have a system where we did an averaging system of decibels, but people are moving away from that with pickleball because the maximum noise is about 70.
Right.
So you're hearing that every time the ball is hit. So averaging it doesn't change anything for the person who's listening to it. They're just hitting 70, 70, 70, 70. So this is something I've done. I've just looked through, you know, there's so many lawsuits. There's just so much stuff online about this.
Well, it's the fastest growing sport.
It is really fast growing.
For sure. It's 5 million people playing two years ago.
Yeah, it's going to grow and continue to grow. So next slide. We did bring up, you know, what are the noise concerns? Certainly, it it could incur noise complaints from park users, tennis players and residents in Felton Gables. There are beliefs that you need, you know, up to some experts say 350 feet between a pickleball court and a residence to avoid noise nuisance. That would deem Holbrook Palmer unusable entirely if you went by that standard because 350 on each side, you, there's no place to put the court because the park is about 700 feet in in width. So.
You know, a distance you have to go to get to 50?
To get to.
Get the noise.
50 does doesn't.
You have to go over 200.
Okay. Just to say the same. Same level of status, which we know is.
Yeah, which is comes in so much lower.
Okay.
You know, we as as my fellow council committee member point out, the noise ordinances aren't really built to address the intermittent sound of pickleball. It's therefore open to interpretation. One mitigated mitigation option is to limit hours to eight to four. Well, obviously, that's doesn't mean that you don't have noise issues. It means it's different than if, let's say, we had lit courts and, you know, it was going on at 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM at night. But just on the bottom right, I think those are the Atherton current sound level limits by.
I would also say I think limiting it is hard with a key system because you've got to lock it up and have people not be able to get into it, which seems very hard. Also, we have an awful lot of people working from home. So I think we'll get the same kind of issues around noise from people. We've got, we actually got a bunch of public comment that we can discuss. So it's just as a management issue. I'm concerned about being able to do that and also whether there is a lot of discontent in the eight to four, but it's something we looked at.
There's different noise studies. Everybody can point to different ones. I think Sally sent around one that was just done by Menlo Circus Club or about that area. People could have different views on is it compliant or not? I can't, I don't, I'm not a lawyer. I won't pretend to be. I think there are different views on what what's in violation, what's not.
And I think it's an evolving. I think we're it's a moving target. I would say the trend I see is that the neighbors seem to be prevailing more frequently than they have in the past with eliminating.
I'm going ahead a few slides. We'll kind of pass the the noise study. Because you could see like here's an example at 6:09, they have pickleball courts on the right, right next to this house. There's pretty much nothing you can do that would not be in violation, but maybe the next slide. At least they found that where the red arrow is and the courts on the left, that was that was within allowable standards.
This is a 2016.
Yes.
2016.
2019, I believe. And so on the next slide, how do we assess demand? So moving off of the noise issue? We believe that, you know, to evaluate a trial success and we need to understand long term demand for pickleball primarily for Atherton residents. Of course, we should be concerned with others, but we should hold both pickleball and tennis and any other programs at the park both to, we should, I believe we should both segment demand for Atherton residents as well as and then separate for others. I think we've done, you know, I think our key system does a good job of 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 doing that, but I'm not sure any other, well, I think maybe now our new reservation system for for where we make different fees for non-Atherton residents, maybe some of those things. But I don't believe our tennis program does a good job right now at defining what's, you know, who's using the tennis.
Data isn't broken out.
Yeah. I think it's important that we would run surveys midpoint and end of trial to to see what people think about it. And and as I've looked at and how other towns have done this and, you know, you'd love to say that there's a more automated system, but what what towns have done is done spot checks to see usage. So you agree, okay, we're going to, you know, go out and, you know, check at different times of the day on different days to say, okay, there are right now, there are seven people at the pickleball courts and there are, you know, because that will assess demand at the end of the day, or true demand will know if people are actually using it through spots checks. Now, it's not perfect, but I think if we do a broad cross section of days, we could look at, you know, true demand of of pickleball is is in addition to call it qualitative demand that people may provide us. And then the last slide, the open deferred issues, potential during trial, the noise, parking. Now, there are a fair amount of unused spaces on the far side of the park. So while it's a longer walk, it's there is a fair amount and, you know, maybe there's a if it becomes a problem, especially during school hours, if, you know, maybe we would, you could ask pickleball players to park far away. You know, there are different things, long term issues, options, where do we? Do we have a permanent court? Do we think about it? What is the funding for construction conversion and an ongoing operational revenue and cost model for a pickleball program? But we wanted to defer those. So in in reality, there there seem to be a couple that if you were going, the most economical thing would be to frankly, convert a court to a permanent court. Now, that could be the unusable, pretty unusable clay court. Move that to a hard court and then, you know, you essentially have five hard courts and one pickleball court, which one, let's call it three to four pickleball courts. There, the other option possibly, but it takes away parking is where that parking lot is on the other side. But that's, that's a, you know, those kinds of, you know, that is a bigger project. I don't, I can't tell you what it would be to build a kind of purpose-built set of courts.
What about between the tennis courts and the terrain?
There's, there's barely enough room for one court.
Is it too narrow?
It is pretty narrow and and that's what I'm, I think it would be hard to build. Maybe you could get to, but I don't think so.
Okay. It, you know, I looking at that part of the area of Holbrook Palmer, you, if if a pickleball court's kind of the same length of the width of a tennis court, you could fit, since there's three sets of tennis courts, you could fit three if you move the little outbuilding there is that is for storage. So you could fit three in there. It's just if you can move the sidewalk enough to fit the fit the courts in. That's just the question of measuring.
The sidewalk would need to be moved closer to the tracks in order to, and I just don't know. It just seemed like a bigger up.
Beyond what we really consider.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of thinking really long term.
Yes. So we didn't, we definitely didn't like look and say, okay, here's every possible place within the park. For we're more focused on, we're not going, we're not going to build courts for a trial. So where could we, you know, do it at the tennis courts? Here's a proposal. Let's talk about it.
One thing we have, we have quite a bit of comments that Sally gave us. A public comment and we have somebody here to do public comments. So maybe.
So.
Go ahead of.
Can I ask one more question? What is the objective for the trial? What do we hope to learn from it?
I think what we would like to learn is given the popularity of pickleball within the US, do we also have similar demand in Atherton? Can we provide a service to our community that they will take advantage of and find valuable? I think we would also like to see, you know, does it, does it create, you know, a community spirit? Because that's something that a lot of pickleball people would would talk about. Does it just bring more people to our park? Make it a better, you know, more usage?
I don't, I don't know that there's even a question about that. There's so many more pickleball players in the or courts. There is a driving demand in Menlo Park to get pickable, of course.
Yes.
So if you open courts, you build it, they will come.
Yeah.
And they will come and you will not have to worry about the courts being full all the time. I firmly believe that. That's the way it's going to be because there's so much of a demand for.
And and we could either ignore that demand or we could say, you know, maybe we want to be part of that is what and and I look at it as I looked at now, Menlo Park is going through the process. They have a setup court right, pickleball court right now. They've agreed to do some more. There, they are at, they will be at 12 pickle, 10 pickleball courts and 12 tennis courts. Redwood City, I think, is four pickleball courts and 12 tennis courts. Palo Alto is 15 pickleball courts and 51 tennis courts. You know, Atherton, right now, we're at zero and six. The question is, and of course, you know, would Portola Valley has courts. There, one, one thing I found also being in the pickleball community, there are a set of people that really do want like, I want to go for the best competition and they might go to, you know, drive 30 minutes to go to the best competition. And then there are people that say, hey, I just want to go close. I want, I want a five minute drive and and get out there and play for an hour. And those hopefully are some of our Atherton residents that would would take advantage of that. And so while undoubtedly, we will bring in some Menlo Park people. I know Atherton residents go play at Menlo Park courts right now. Maybe some of those Menlo Park people, maybe some Redwood City people will come and play here. And, you know, I think that will be, that will be also true. And maybe that's good. Maybe we can figure out just a part of it is just assessing the true demand.
I think, yeah. There's no doubt that there's a lot of demand. I think one thing knowing what in terms of Atherton residents, because one of the things when you have this enormous demand is it will fill up. And there's no, there's, you know, there's nobody, anybody wants to can go there. So finding out that it's an Atherton resident interest, I think, is important. And I also think the placement, unfortunately, of those tennis courts is right on a fence against Felton Gables. And when we get to the public comments, we'll see that, you know, going from four people on a tennis court to 16 people on a pickleball court with the noise and the social element raises concerns for those people. So I think what we're trying to do is just take all the different things that are on the plate and come up with a solution that works for all these constituencies. And my feeling is I just, I want the town to be really well informed before we spend any money. I'd like to make sure that it's actually a possible thing that we could do. And if we have to deal with things like noise mitigation, that's another $10,000 or $15,000. So we need to say, what is a reasonable test? And if the noise is going to be too loud for Felton Gables, we'd have to think about noise mitigation, which raises makes it a much more expensive proposition.
So if the four, there's going to be four, right? That's 16 players is overwhelmed by people from outside of Atherton, which is what's going to happen. Are we okay with that?
Wait, I have a question. So there's a lot of issues that are presented here. But does the subcommittee have a recommendation for Park and Rec? Because I think Park and Rec needs to make a recommendation if it's going to, to the city council. And and I'm sure that there's lots of different variables for, I mean, we've talked about the four courts. I'm sure we could do two courts. The issue of why four versus two is probably a good question. But the bigger question for me is whether the subcommittee has a recommendation or not.
I don't think we have a unanimous one at this point. Because I, at this point, would not would not forward it onto the council. I don't think we have enough information and we also we have public comment and there's, I don't know, 10 or 12 against doing it. And that's just with a very informal knowing about this meeting. So I don't think at this point that we could recommend taking action.
So hopefully.
The thing that I'm trying to understand is who were the stakeholders that were asked? Because when we checked with the key holders of Atherton, because they're they're split, you can see who bought the keys because of the prices that they paid and their names are recorded. We couldn't find any of the people we routinely play with from Atherton that were asked about pickleball.
And there's a lot of.
Frank, can you mute? Thanks.
Yeah, so so why don't we finish up with questions, then we can open up to public comment and then have further discussion? If that's a good kind of, and then from the discussion, hopefully, we can see if we have a consensus on a proposal. If not, then we'll see what we should do next.
Okay.
Okay, so are there any other questions from committee members on the on the presentation? Okay, so, um, are there any other questions from committee members on the, on the presentation?
Is whether two versus four courts was considered and the strengths and weaknesses of that, because Bob's raised about the number of people that would be on the tennis courts if there were four, and it, and it looks crowded to me, like tennis poles are still there. And they're kind of in the way of a portion of each of the side pickleball courts. But.
Yeah. So the, I, I think, um, the idea of four, um, so there's positives and negatives to both of, um, um, two gives more room to the pickleball players. It limits it to, to, you know, eight people being out there at once, which inherently limits maybe people to say, well, you know, is it likely I could get on a court? Um, and that is your biggest driver of, you know, if there was only a single court, nobody's going to show up because they just don't think that they'll get there. They'll, they'll be able to find other people that will, you know, show up together. Um, I think the other thing is, uh, so that's why I thought, you know, two, from, you know, having been to various facilities and how they've done it, two seems problematic for, you know, getting uh, getting enough demand going, um, or really, you know, getting people to say, okay, it's worth going to these courts because I'm going to find a game and be able to get in on a game. The four was, yeah, it's going to be a little crowded, like Menlo Park is a little crowded, but people, people deal with it. Um, and it will grow the community quicker and we'll figure out that people really want it quicker. That was the, the, you know, the, uh, so my thought is, if we were making this a permanent thing, I would probably want, I'd recommend, or I would say three, but it's not permanent, so it's kind of two or four. And I think, um, uh, you know, you could, you technically could do three, but you'd be, you know, it wouldn't be as, it, one side of the court would be the same um, kind of crowded stuff. Uh, so that was the, the thought process.
I do think is that, you know, with all this demand, I, I think I would have a concern that we really want to make this available to Atherton residents. Um, and that, that needs to be the reason we're doing it. Um, and while I know it's not usual to have reservations, if you, if someone gets, pays for a, a key for that period, for that particular three or six month period, and they could make a reservation, that would ensure that more Atherton residents could be, be there and play because they could plan ahead and be there. Because I think, I'm, I'm worried about this kind of fire hose phenomenon that we get it and it's just so much demand and people, you know, it's not Atherton residents and certainly from the public comment, our tennis players don't want it. So that's, that's just a concern. Um, and I know it's unwieldy to do reservations in some way, but other people do it. Um, and I do think it's really important that this be something that accrues to Atherton residents. We're not doing this to have people from other towns come here. We're giving up a tennis court and first there has to be demand and second, we have to be able to manage it so that, um, you know, our residents are able to use it.
Okay, uh, are there any other questions, uh, from the committee?
Like, like, length, length of time for this trial is going to be four months? Is that what we said?
Yeah, three to four months, I believe.
Right.
Is the season of the year now going to make a, make our data worthwhile or not as sufficient, being that it's, you know, maybe going to rain in this state a little more?
Yeah, I think, I, I think we could, uh, we definitely might, I think that would, uh, uh, certainly affect uh, demand if we have a really rainy sis- sis- uh, season and maybe it would be, let's extend it. I wouldn't be as worried about, oh, it's winter. Um, I think for whatever reason, the, the crowd is hearty enough to.
Yeah, I think that's true with tennis too. We don't, if it's not raining, everybody's pretty.
These are the fastest drying courts I've ever played on.
Yeah.
Okay, the new weather question is, um, the time of day that, that the one tennis court is going to be occupied would be from eight to four? Is that what the proposal is?
Um, I think the initial proposal was the entire day, um, of during the trial, the, the court would be reserved for pickleball. I could, yeah, I could easily see differing opinions on that and especially if you know, tennis players, I think I saw one, um, interesting note where, you know, it's tennis is stronger in the afternoon and evenings. Maybe the decision is, well, pickleball has eight to three or eight to two, and then we, then they you know, that's another option if, if the, you know, if, if we think that that's the right recommendation to the town council, it's, you know.
Well, I think what we have to do is test what we would do if we in fact had them there. And if they're there and you can get on them, um, monitoring them to end at four o'clock seems very unlikely. I think you'd have to do the same thing that tennis courts happen. I mean, unless we're going to lock them at four o'clock.
Um, I don't think it's actually much of a problem. Uh, I would say that I've seen, um, whether it's Mitchell Park or others that are dual-use, um, on some courts, uh, they are, uh, you know, if a tennis person has a reservation at three PM and if they could only reserve from three PM on, they had a reservation at three PM, um, the pickleball community, from what I've seen, would gladly get off the court. Um, but, you know, everyone could have.
So the, the, if I could, the, the onsite staff also is, includes Michael Jessup's team, so, um, certainly we're not asking him to do massive policing, just that if, um, you know, we post signs that say what the hours are for pickleball and, uh, you know, Michael's team can just remind folks, you know, if there's a, a question that a pickleball's over at a certain time, it's, you know, look at the sign, you know, that's, that, that's probably enough in terms of policing that we'll need.
Yeah, that's what Portola Valley does as well.
One other thought was with, if we do two, if we do four, there'll be a lot of lines on that court. And, uh, being both pickleball and a tennis enthusiast, that would be a tennis players, they don't want that court. There's just too many lines on it, um, to make it somewhere that you really can play tennis. Um, so we'd get it back, but we would not get back. It's not getting back a court that could be, we can think of comparable to the other, um, tennis courts.
Okay, are, are there any other questions? If not, uh, let's turn it over to public comment. Uh, Sally, should we start with those in the room and then we can turn over to online?
Yeah, let's start with the, the one person in the room and then anybody on Zoom and then I can go over public comment.
Yeah, if you could, if you could introduce yourself and maybe what, what town you're from. There you go. Great.
Okay, my name is Betsy Hallaby. I have lived in Atherton since nineteen seventy-six. I used Maple. Do all my stuff at Holbrook Palmer. Now I live in, um, on Catalpa in Lindenwood. Um, I have been playing pickleball for three years in Redwood City. I know everyone. Um, I started at the Y and then when COVID happened, I, we moved to Red Morton. Myself, two other women, pretty much that, uh, we were there. Uh, solidly, they've done everything we asked them to do. We are designing the signs. I can tell you guys exactly what you want to do, if you really want to know. Um, hi Frank, you remember me from Stanford?
I was, that's, I was just going to say, I have to recuse myself because I think her daughter and my daughter play soccer together forever, so I, I can't make a comment. No.
Um, anyway, so what we do at Red Morton, um, is we have, uh, two tennis courts. There, they were illegally, um, uh, measured eons and eons ago, which is why we can't do four on one tennis court. We do two and two, two and two. So we have four courts. We only play between like eight and eleven, eight and eleven thirty. You know why? The wind. Nobody plays pickleball in the afternoon at Red Morton, yeah, largely because of the wind. It's a wiffle ball. You just can't. And so the tennis players, they come at like eleven forty-five and they have whatever they need until six. Maybe pickleball is on the weekends, but again, it's pretty much only in the mornings. There's houses within, like from here to here, somebody's backyard. So in, um, respect to the people that live there, um, that's one reason we said to Parks and Rec, we can be done by eleven thirty. I mean, if you want to play at one, you can, but it's maybe four people. Um, parking is never an issue. The thing about pickleball, it's fluid. It's not like, uh, all of a sudden you've got a million cars. Oh my God, where do I park? It's three or four. Maybe there's eight. Now there's only four. Within those three hours between eight and eleven, maybe you've got six cars there at one time because it's fluid. Um, and you, everybody there is single. A couple of couples, but you come and you just hang and you play with whatever that there's a free thing. We have a system of where you put your paddle. Um, you can't come as a foursome and hog a court. It's a public court. You come and you play with everybody. And the joy that has come out of these three years is my mental health. And I think it would be a shame for Atherton to once again be the NIMBY city on the peninsula that says no to our age group. Look at how old we are in this room, not you. Um, this is the group that's driving that social need. We have a couple of cute guys that come, they're in their twenties and they think we're a hoot. Um, but if you want to maintain the aging population of Atherton who wants to use Holbrook Palmer Park, that's who you need to address. And my vision, I think Alex, you and I met like eight months ago with somebody at the park and we just had these wonderful ideas of what pickleball could bring to the community, um, that I find just joyful. And as a resident who has been here since my twenties and now I'm in my sixties, the town is changing and Holbrook Palmer, I think, needs to change with the town. And I'm happy to give input because working with Redwood City Parks and Rec is a joy. They are all about what do our residents want and how can we make it happen? Um, and tennis has come along with us. Yes, there were bumps in the road, but tennis really, they only play there in the afternoons. And so it's been a wonderful symbiotic, um, working group. And if you haven't already talked to the guy that runs the athletic program at Menlo College or Menlo School, Menlo School, I think, God, I can't remember his name. He is just the best person to talk to about how you bring a community along. And we did our due diligence. Um, Redwood City, we sent out emails to every single person in Redwood City because the city gave us access and we did a survey and we went by what the survey said. And so it was a very positive experience. So if anybody wants to stop by, I'm there Monday through Friday, eight to eleven. And you can sort of see the, the joy and how people all work together. And sometimes there's eight of us there and sometimes there's thirty of us there. And we're all grumpy like, oh, I'm only going to get two games this hour. But it ebbs and flows is my point. So you shouldn't be catastrophizing about, oh my God, where are people going to park and stuff? It's really a much more fluid pickup game vibe that I think is good, you know, sauce that the town needs. Anyway, I got to go pick up my Chinese food.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Anywho, thank you. And no, I don't know why I thought you were somebody else.
Is there anyone else in the room?
For me.
Can I, yeah.
Sally?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have you played at Mitchell Park?
Yes, I've played everywhere. And you know, sometimes we have Foster City people come down because their courts were getting refurbished and we're like, this is kind of a pain, but hey, we met some nice people. Sometimes I've gone to Mitchell Park, Mitch, I wouldn't compare you guys, your, that's, it's apples and oranges. Mitchell Park is a huge park. It's a, it's much more public. I don't think of Holbrook Palmer as a public park, frankly. I don't know if it is. Is it?
It is. It's a public park. Absolutely.
Doesn't have that vibe. But, um, Mitchell Park is crazy. There's, for me, it's too competitive. I don't find my, my niche there. Redwood City is my vibe, much more than any other city, to tell you the truth. So I wouldn't compare yourselves to Mitchell Park. It's not going to become, people aren't going to.
Yeah.
There are a couple of Atherton in droves, let me just tell you. Yep. For what Noah wants to do for the trial, yes, because what I worry about with the two, people are going to be so happy with the town for doing this. They're going to want to show support and come out and play. And it'll be frustrating if you have to wait an hour to get a spot on the court. I, I'd rather go full tilt, do a trial for maybe three months. Shorten your hours, do it eight to noon.
True.
And that will help with the neighbors who want to have a cocktail in their backyard around three thirty and they're hearing noise.
Although we don't have a wind issue, fortunately.
Um, but, and what's coming down the pike for pickleball because of the noise complaints is different rackets. And I think what some places are doing, maybe like in Palm Springs or whatever, is they're mandating that you can only play with a softer racket. I don't know if you've heard about that.
Yeah, and there are a set of
For noise abatement things.
It, it's harder to manage, but there are a set of approved, call it quieter rackets, but they're not, they're, they're not, they're not super quiet. The, the difference was like the early pickleball paddles were like those, like ones you see at the beach, like wood, yeah, and, and those were loud. Now the new composite ones are a little bit better. Um, and they'll continue to improve, but yeah, it's.
Yeah. Honestly, what your noise complaint is going to come from are people laughing and having fun. And saying, good shot. Oh my God, you kid, you know, it's conversation that is actually going to be your noise factor, not the actual ball. And I'm, you know, what do I say to that neighbor? I'm like, kind of fun to hear a happy neighbor. Sorry. And it's only from eight to twelve.
Right.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will.
Are there any other, uh, comments from within the room or, uh, should we turn to online? Sally, is there, is there anyone else in the room that has a comment?
Somebody else is in the room that is going to make a comment.
Why don't we open this up for, um, people who are online who want to make a comment? Is there anyone that wants to make a comment on pickleball topic?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Hey, hey guys, how are you doing?
Doing well?
All right. Well, yeah, so I saw the, the proposal and I was a little bit you know, it was different than what I had heard before. I, I don't think I was ever actually reached out to at all by the subcommittee, so I was little taken back by that. Um, but a cou- a couple of comments. Uh, one is, for me, court six doesn't work. It would have to be on court one. Uh, just because we do our lessons on primarily on four and five and to do lessons right next to it, pickleball would be very difficult. So, um, that would be one. Uh, two, if you put the yellow lines on the court, it's not usable for tennis.
Yeah.
So it's, it's basically, you're taking a court away for good for, from, uh, the key holders. Um, originally, I thought it was going to be a split time thing to try, try it out, but that's going to be more of a permanent thing. So, you know, and then built into that cost would be have to convert, you know, another four or five thousand to change the lines back to tennis lines afterwards. On that, I think, you know, that, the, the, the basic clientele of Holbrook Palmer Park is, it's Atherton, similar to, you know, what Circus Club is doing. They're putting up the sound walls about twenty thousand dollars. I talked to them. Um, you know, it's just so people can get along, you know, so that both stakeholders aren't losing like, okay, it's very difficult to play next to four pickleball courts, you know, it's, it's pinging, you know. Another thing too is that I think they're on the tennis courts, they would have to abide by tennis etiquette as well, because people are trying to play tennis and stuff. And, you know, also I'm running a business, you know, people want to play tennis there too. And it's like, okay, yeah, you want to do the trial, but then if it's completely changing the characteristic of that, um, that space, that makes things a lot more difficult. So I think that, you know, yeah, go out and have fun with your friends, but you know, it's pickleball is a whole different, different field that changes the characteristic of the park, you know. Originally, I think the park is supposed, supposed to be more pastoral and stuff. It's, it's a, it's a different type of um, sport, you know, and you know, that's for the Parks and Rec to figure out, hey, does this fit into the characteristic of the park? You know, I, I think it's kind of similar to the dog park issue, you know? Um, but just as far as my business, I think the two things it would be. But just as far as my business, I think the two things it would be, one, it would have to be on Court One, and then two, they should be, they should have to go to abide by tennis etiquette as well. And then three, we're going to get complaint, you're, well, not me, but you guys are going to get complaints for tennis key holders. Like, why do we have to pay for a key if they don't have to? So I think if you make, you make it all free or not at all.
Thank you, Michael. If you remember, Julie and I did talk to you a few months ago and asked you all about pickleball and, but I guess maybe you didn't remember, but anyways.
Well, we didn't really, no, we had it, we tried to set it up, but we never got it because there was a committee change.
No, but I, I and Julie, when I was on the committee, I, I passed on your feedback to the new Park and Rec Committee. And Julie actually has been on the committee throughout. So she's hopefully informed both Noah and Patricia, the, everything that we've talked about. And I've shared my notes with the, the rest of the Park and Rec too. So they, they, everyone kind of knows what I, I knew.
Well, it's actually helpful for me to hear from Michael because I, as a new member, I, I understood some things, but not in this kind of detail. And I think it's a very interesting point, the whole etiquette issue of what the noise and the whole behavior is at pickleball versus tennis, because it is profoundly different. And you're going from four people on a court to sixteen people and a much noisier interaction. So I'm, I'm really glad that you were able to bring it up for us, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any others on the, on the Zoom that want to have public comment on this topic? I don't see one with their hands raised or unmuted. So so why don't we bring this back to the committee for discussion? So does anyone want to?
Well, before we do that, we have a public comment that has
Yeah, so I have a bunch of public comment I received over the last week. I'd like to briefly just read it because it wasn't, couldn't be a part of the agenda. So actually, this evening I received public comment from NJ Davy, an Atherton resident. He would like to voice my support for pickleball to be given some court time at Holbrook Palmer Park. The park is wonderful gathering place for the community. And where we now have a baseball diamond that's great for the children that choose to play. Pickleball is a very inclusive sport for all ages and, and Atherton is a perfect community for residents to become more active in the sport. Many Atherton residents are currently playing in Palo Alto. Hello? And and it would be much more convenient to play, is consider allowing pickleball at Holbrook Palmer Park. And then I received a lot more emails. So I guess, do you want me to just read through these?
That'd be helpful.
So Sally, we are longtime Atherton residents and users of the tennis courts and wanted to drop you a brief proposal to convert a tennis court to a pickleball court. While it might appear to the casual observer that there's plenty of room for this on the tennis courts, it's actually pretty tricky to schedule court, but we want to play. This is especially true since the clay court is only appropriate for a subset of total number of players. While we support pickleball flourishing, we don't think that tennis court should be allocated to it. This is especially true in light of the extensive work just recently completed on the courts. In short, we don't believe we should mess with the current tennis court arrangement that has been and will continue to be successful in our town. And this is from Josh and Judy Green. And is the woman who gave public comment earlier, was that Betty Ho?
What was it, Betsy or?
Oh, that was Betty. Yeah. So we have public comment from Betty Ho. Hi, we've heard that there is a proposal to introduce pickleball to Holbrook Palmer Park. The tennis courts are often very busy and hard for residents to find a court to play. With the introduction of pickleballs, it will place even more depends on availability. We think the town the ball to Holbrook Palmer Park. Oftentimes, the busiest times are after school gets out, the parking lot is often this, or practice on the baseball field. With sixteen people per court, it will make the area to be even six, with sixteen people per court will make the area to be even make the area mode congested and there's no place to park. Hi Sally, I'm a key holder to the tennis courts at Holbrook Palmer Park. I'm ready to express support for guaranteed to tennis.
Was that in, I'm sorry, was that in favor or against the? Last one to you.
They didn't address it. They just said they're in support of two guaranteed tennis courts.
Okay.
Then, and that was from Prashana. And then from Michael, I have, hi Sally, Michael just have shared your email address in the context with the pickleball courts. I would like to keep the tennis courts as is, as I enjoy playing tennis and I'm not interested in pickleball. And then from Patty Botcher. Hi, I'm a Holbrook Palmer Park neighbor living at three forty-six Felton Drive in Menlo Park. I have had a key to the tennis courts for years and have enjoyed using it weekly for against the installation of pickleball courts on the tennis courts for two reasons. Twice from the play will very much impact those tents near the courts. We already hear tennis play, which causes much less noise than pickleball. The second reason is that to leave key holders only one court since player capital organization reserves that others, this does not seem right. Thank you for considering my view. From Robin Lewis and Joe Dennis. And they write, we've been playing tennis regularly at Holbrook Palmer for the last seven years and we are writing to suggest a solution to add pickleball courts without reducing tennis capacity. During the peak hours, late afternoon, early evening, the tennis courts are typically all in use. So converting court to pickleball would result in some tennis players being unable to play and reduce capacity for tennis lessons. Further, during baseball season, the parking lot on the side of the park is often at capacity and that would be further exaggerated by bringing in additional pickleball players. Instead of creating conflict between neighbors over the use of existing courts, can we look at building new pickleball courts in a portion of the parking lot on the opposite side of the park? While the temporary village buildings have been situated. In the temporary building experiment, we learned that a portion of the parking lot wasn't really needed. Building new dedicated pickleball courts in that location would add pickleball without removing tennis capacity, which is distribute use of remaining parking more efficiently. It would also place pickleball further away from a larger number of residents. There's demand for pickleball at Holbrook Palmer. Let's find a way to meet that demand with taking away another popular resource. Okay, we've got a couple more comments. Stacy and Jonathan Schuman. We are submitting this comment in advance of the November twenty second council meeting regarding the proposal to designate one, one or more tennis courts of Holbrook Palmer Park for pickleball. We oppose this proposal and believe that all courts at Holbrook Palmer Park should remain reserved for exclusive use of tennis. Pickleball would materially disturb the peaceful and quiet enjoyment of Holbrook Palmer Park by all park users. Contact between a ball and racket and pickleball generates significantly louder noise and the contact between a ball and racket and tennis. The repeated striking of pickleball would create nuisance for park users and neighbors who live adjacent to the park. Unlike tennis, pickleball does not have rules of conduct or behavior that maintain a peaceful, quiet environment. Pickleball is inherent inherently social activity that attracts persistent conversation among participants that typically turns into yelling, screaming, even cursing, because there are no rules of etiquette as exist in tennis. Noise from pickleball players will create a disturbance for users of tennis courts for other parkgoers. The tennis courts at Holbrook Palmer Park have been used consistently over many years, including recent years that are at full capacity most days. Designate one or more courts for pickleball will reduce the ability of residents to play tennis. At Holbrook Palmer Park, tennis players of all ages and abilities will be negatively impacted. Young players, including children of Atherton, who do not necessarily have a voice at this council meeting, will be disproportionately affected because A, children typically play tennis, but do not play pickleball. Demographics of pickleball are heavily skewed towards older generations. And B, children rely on public facilities such as Holbrook Palmer Park for access to tennis courts because they may not have access to private tennis courts to the extent that older players do. Permitting pickleball courts at Holbrook Palmer Park will create strife between pickleball players and other parkgoers and between the pickleball players and the local residents. Please refer to the following article. This details the negative experience of another community in the area.
Go ahead. Is that it or?
No, I have a couple more, sorry.
Okay, okay.
My emails are blowing up this week. So I have a email from an anonymous person, but they say they're Atherton resident, avid tennis player. Thank you for letting us know about the proposal for a pickleball court, given the current high demand for the plus the fact that they were very recently resurfaced. I fervently hope not. None of the hard courts will be converted to a pickleball court. Since pickleball court is much smaller than a tennis court, perhaps a tennis wall behind the tennis court can be converted into a pickleball court. The cost of the conversion should be borne by the pickleball players who are offering to pay. The other consideration is noise. Pickleball play is much noisier since it uses a solid paddle and more frequent heading due to smaller court size. A louder additional noise from four pickleball courts would be a significant issue, not only for the tenant players, but also for the neighbors whose house borders the courts. And then I, there's a couple come up from Tom Lu. I am a longtime resident of Atherton. Both my son and I play tennis and take lessons in Holbrook Palmer Park. Holbrook Palmer Park tennis is already very crowded. Please do not convert to pickleball. Pickleball is super noisy. It interferes with all tennis play. One of my neighbors has a pickleball court. When he or she plays, the noise bothers all neighborhood and gets a lot of complaints. If we have four pickleball courts, no one can play tennis quietly. I strongly suggest the city would build pickleball courts separately. And then I have one last public comment from Anders Mortensen. My name is Anders Mortensen. My family, I've been proud residents of Atherton since we came to the United States in twenty fifteen. We love our community. We are active users of Holbrook Palmer Park, especially the tennis courts, where I've been a key holder for many years. I understand you're concerning, concerning, converting a tennis court for pickleball. Pickle, pickleball will attract no Atherton residents. Pickleball is much more noisy than tennis and will lead to many non-Atherton residents using the facilities versus favor Atherton citizens, unfair to tennis players and worse than capacity issues. As you are considering, please know that since player capital occupies four of the six courts, we already face capacity peak hours, taking away a court would unfairly favor pickleball players. If Atherton Parks and Rec would like to introduce pickleball, I would strongly advocate for establishing the pickleball somewhere else in the park. Thank you for your consideration. That is all the public comment I received.
Okay. Thank you, Sally.
Also, I think there are a couple that are in the, in the agenda packet. One from Scott Detmer, resident and another from Don Keller that were put in that are also in your packet. Hopefully you got a chance to read those. Also, originally, when I wasn't on the committee, we set up a petition to advocate for courts. There's four hundred and one signees of that of who, of whom fifty-six are Atherton residents or that I know are Atherton residents. The data is a little wonky on what, you know, some people are listed as Hawaii and I can't really tell. But so there is, there's, we know there's demand, I think. That's also, you know, and they are all essentially public people. And I, I think I've shared it with this committee at one point, who, who the signings were.
But fifty-six are Atherton residents?
Yes.
That's, I had a question, Sally, if, do we know if the circus club and or any Atherton residents have complained to code, code enforcement about noise from pickleball on personal courts or from the circus club?
I can actually talk to that because we're longtime members of the circus club.
Go ahead, Tricia.
Actually met with circus club. They put together a committee. They've done a up. One is the decibels and the second is the nature of the sound, which comes under the clause disturbing the quiet enjoyment of one's property. Where they stand now is they put up a twenty thousand dollars, I believe, of a mitigating, it's some kind of plastic blanket. With the hope, all of us hoping that will be adequate. If it is not adequate, this committee will ask the board to move the courts to another location because they're just too close to a house.
Has that house complained or?
Yeah, I'm the house.
Oh, you're the house. Okay.
I'm the house. Yeah. So that's why I've learned about this because of that situation. They neglected to get, they did not ask neighbors before they built it. And then, of course, it, during the pandemic, it got very, very, very noisy.
And you're a hundred feet?
I'm a hundred feet. Yeah. On the fences. The usual, they recommend somewhere between three and four hundred. Some people are more dramatic and you can get about five decibels down with the acoustic fence, but then you're talking about quite a bit more money. And also it's a little harder when you don't have a freestanding court because you got to do three sides. But that was, we had several neighborhood meetings regarding this whole issue because it affected neighbors all around.
Okay.
So we received information in the chat from our code enforcement officer. She says code enforcement has not received any complaints for pickleball activity at Menlo Park Circus Club or residents in Atherton since January tenth of twenty twenty-two. Complaints were made to the circus club directly, but not
Okay. Thank you, Lisa Marie. So I guess this has come to the time of whether the committee wants to make a recommendation for pickleball, a pickleball trial, what the parameters are. If we need more discussion, more investigation before we make a recommendation. That's possible too. If I could also ask Rick if there's, I know there's, I understand from the city manager, there's there's some interest in bringing this to the town council to have them weigh in and provide us feedback about what they're looking for. So, you know, you know, we could possibly provide a, a partial recommendation and hear what what the council wants to, you know, give us direction on. That's a possibility too. So
Yeah, he, he has indicated that he thinks because there's been enough public discourse on the subject, really at the initiation of Park and Rec, but that people have reached out to individual council members, both from Park and Rec and from the community. No doubt, some of the same people that gave public comment that's been noted tonight. That he feels like if the council ought to make a decision on it. It's not on our current agenda. And I'm very familiar with what we've got scheduled for the month of December. I don't think it'll come before the council in the month of December. Because we, we've got, or we've got three meetings, but the first one is going to focus on the circulation plan that you guys are supposed to talk about tonight. And that's, that's the first Wednesday. The second meeting on the fifteenth is going to be completely focused on housing. And the third meeting on the twenty-first is when we do our reorganization and there's a party afterwards for everyone who is on committees, which we haven't done since twenty nineteen. So that agenda is going to be very short. So my best guess is that the council would first really discuss this in January.
So that means you could make a recommendation tonight or at the December Park and Rec meeting?
True. Yeah. And so you, yeah, you can make a recommendation tonight or at the December Park and Rec meeting. That's correct. So and in either case, it, it, you know, I, I don't think it'll be considered until January.
So maybe we should just ask around the room among the committee members how they feel about the current proposal the subcommittee has made, whether each committee member feels that it's enough that we recommend the council or we need more discussion or tweaks to it.
I guess I'd say at this point, looking at the public input and the issues, I don't think there's enough support to do the pickleball trial. That doesn't mean that we couldn't consider it some other way, but there seems to be very strongly held feeling. So the current four courts or even three courts seems like it may, it seems like there's a lot of town opposition to that.
Okay. Thank you, Tricia.
I'm not on the committee for the pickleball. And I do understand what the woman said about pickleball. It has a passionate, social kind of a thing, and it's a really good thing for, for people. My concern is that I, I don't, maybe I didn't get all the information. I'm really new here. I didn't see a, a good feedback or asking for the key holders as to what do the key holders? As to what do the key holders think about? Those are the ones that have supported. The tennis with keys and having the system. And of course, Michael has done a great job to have a tennis center. But I don't know, I don't get a feeling like the tennis key holders. Were asked what they thought about pickleball. Now, maybe because their tennis players are against it, I don't know, but. I don't think that 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 was done because I've talked to many of them and I don't know where they've been, but they were shocked that it was being considered. In in terms of of having the way it was going. So I don't know if we're ready to do a recommendation at this point in time. With them being so busy, maybe it gives us a little more time to gather some more information without making it, you can gather information forever and. Decision also. So and I know you've gathered so much, you know, already on it. But we have to deal with a, a different. Culture. Tennis players and the way they like to play tennis. And they like it quiet. I get annoyed when there's things going on. And pickleball players are more into the, let's have some fun here, but still. Have a sport that we enjoy and get a lot out of. And I think it's just. Working that difference together.
I agree. And I, I actually believe there's enough. I would probably tweak the proposal and push it forward. I would. I actually originally came in with the belief that pickleball shouldn't take the whole day and because we could. We should limit the hours to the morning. And I think that's confirmed with our resident Betsy Halby that came by. Because I think that's when pickleball is played. And I think that would allow pickleball and the tennis community to work well together. And I think that's a, with that tweak, I think I'd be much more comfortable in in recommending it. I think we have demand. I think the subcommittee both. Frankly, you know, worked and I know some of the notes had. Representative, I mean, it wasn't a full survey by any means to key holders, but there was a conversation on. Alex was part of that with, with some member of the tennis community. I, you know, I recognize that. I think there's some very interesting concepts that we need to think about. I saw some very. Useful information in the. In in the comments about both for and against pickleball. Where, you know, both on, on providing equity and access. Is as much allowing it for our pickleball playing community as our tennis playing community, whether it be young or old. We have a, we have a, we right now reserve four courts for the use of player capital. That's a private facility paying private fees. And I understand it generates the park and the town revenue. But that is also a private, not, you know, fully accessed for all of our residents. And so, you know, I think of it as, I see a lot of value in. And I've heard in comments here and others about how it brings the community together. I think those, those aspects are important as we hopefully move. From this pandemic and people are getting more and more out and start building bonds between neighbors. And I'd like to see that being done at Holbrook Palmer. And we could see it as part of a trial. This isn't a permanent. You know, test, you know, a permanent thing that would not be able to recover from. And so that therefore I'd actually recommend that we move forward with, you know, bringing it to the the larger town council.
I'm sorry, why did you make the comment about it's a private, the player capital is private?
Well, so four of our courts are reserved by player capital. In order to use those courts, you have to pay for lessons, our clinics. That is, that's private.
You just have to buy a key.
No, the keys, I understand the key, the two courts are used for the, our, our key. That's, that's a hundred dollars. It's the, it's the four courts, which is the, you know. We have to think about that long term, that we have two thirds of our courts reserved in for player capital. Right now, and and the question I've, I've heard from others is that, well. Maybe, you know, the, the right answer is not that we have take away a court long term from our tennis playing. Community, the key holders, that, that they should continue to have two. Pickleball should have one court and have four or three or whatever the right number. And then our, maybe our private, you know, tennis instruction facility has three. That's a possibility. It's not to be done now. I just bringing that up as as something. That is, you know, and and so as part of this trial, you know, we focus more on just. Not disrupting that existing contract at this point, but I think we have to think about it.
Is it right to say there's six quarters? Is it really right to say there's five?
There's five.
There's five courts. So it really is, there are not six courts. Because the play court is not used.
Five courts and anybody can get a key and play on the courts and. Player capital doesn't always use all the courts they're assigned. So sometimes they're available and they allow you to play.
Yeah, I, I'm also reading the comments that show that people are seemingly having trouble getting on court, so.
But that's going to be worse if you take one away.
People do have some trouble because there's times.
Right, and in the after days and evenings.
Our adults are player after work and the kids play after school. So in that timeframe, that's where a lot of the play is.
Perfect.
And if you can't play at other times, yes, I would, I would see that, that.
Yeah, I think.
So Frank, would you like to provide your comments?
Rick is gonna make a statement.
Sure, go ahead. Say that the reason that the town entered into the contract with player capital doesn't give player capital control over four courts. The, the reason that we did it was the player capital provided sufficient funds to completely take care of the courts. The courts are in excellent condition now. So if, if anyone else comes in, they're coming in on the backs. Of the money that player capital was used to improve the courts. They have been in terrible condition in the past. And they're in great condition now. And that's really because of the funds that have come from player capital nowhere else. The town doesn't have the funds to maintain the courts. So, but I, I believe that key holders can reserve courts. And it's worked out very well. I, I mean, there's, you know, if everybody wants to play at the same time, everybody can't play at the same time. So there has to be some flexibility, but that's always the case. And in our case, it's the case on courts that are excellently. Maintained.
I'm also on Bob's point that we do have a relationship with the key holders. And I do feel that we. That this is really changing. It's changing the environment they're going to be in. It's changing the number of courts that are available. And I have, I do have a difficulty with that because I think we have to really talk and understand those key holders, at least the ones that we've seen in the public comments. Are all opposed to it. And at this point, it's a big convenience to be able to make an appointment, make, you know, get a reservation for a certain time. And there's lots of enthusiasm and they're being used. So in some ways, I feel like we've got a very good system and a good relationship with player capital and. It's hard to think of mixing the two with the different cultures.
I'd like to give Frank a chance to.
A lot of what I was going to say, Bill just, I mean, Rick just reiterated, but the one thing I would, I would also say, I'm still not convinced. I'm going to go over and spend some time next week to look at this. And I just don't understand why we can't take the handball court. And blow that thing up and build a, build a pickleball facility there, solve everybody's problems at the same time. Because what I really don't want to do is kill the goose that lays the golden egg. For you guys that aren't aware, the. The town of Atherton receives about forty to sixty percent of their costs. For maintaining the park are covered by the fees from users of the park, not just. Player capital, but of course the rentals and everything else. But we have an incredible situation that is very unique. Very, very few municipal parks get anywhere more than five to ten percent of their costs covered by fees. And we have. Many months, we have sixty percent, but if we average it at fifty, it's still remarkable. So I would really be careful about. Putting ourselves in position that, you know, we, we jeopardize that sort of financial future. I don't have any problem with pickleball, but I also think that we're overlooking the handball court. And I gotta believe, I'm going to go out there and measure that. I don't believe it. I'm going, I think we can build, we could build a pickleball facility over there and be done with this whole problem. That's the end of it.
Thank you, Frank. So. You know, the hearing all the comments today, I do sense that a lot of tennis key holders don't want to have pickleball. And. One thing I thought that the trial would really help with is just to find out what is truly a problem and what is. Right now, a lot of what is speculative could be a problem. And there's a lot of possible issues, but. I think what a trial would bear out is exactly what are real issues. And then we could, during the trial. Attempt to mitigate as many of the issues as possible and see what works and what doesn't. It would also inform us in terms of, you know, if noise is a big problem. We have to cite maybe the permanent pickleball court somewhere else. And I always thought of the trial as being a true, a truly temporary so that. It wouldn't affect key holders long term. We'd find out, okay, you know, is there interest in pickleball? If there's interest, is there. Those who are playing pickleball willing to help fund it. In conjunction with the town, whether, how much, you know, we'll, we'll find out during the trial in terms of who can contribute what. And then also. You know, if there's a lot of interest, maybe the town bill, town and the, the people who are interested in build slightly more pickleball courts than we thought we, we might need. And if there's lower interest, maybe fewer. Or if there's no interest, then we're kind of done with it and we don't have to consider anymore because we tried it. That, and you know, that's what I, I think the importance of the trial is that it's, it's not going to be permanent. You know, a lot of people think, well, there could be this problem or that problem, but. We'll know for sure during the trial what the, the real problems are and if there are possible mitigations. Right now, I don't see a consensus from this committee in terms of putting a proposal forward. So what I. I'm proposing we do is if the subcommittee is willing to, maybe talk to some more of the tennis key holders. See if there's things that we can tweak on the trial to get more buy-in. That, that would be reasonable for the trial to have, you know, we, you know, certainly we have to make sure that the trial has a, a decent chance of success. That'll have interest among the pickleball community to, to be part of this trial. And if there, if there are things that we could mitigate for the test key holders, then that would be great. We should include that and. Get some more buy-in from them so that they are not put out in the three to four months that we have the trial. And then, once that happens, bring it back in December. I do realize that's probably a couple of weeks. It might be. Probably a little tight to collect all that feedback, considering we got Thanksgiving coming up, too. But, you know, I don't know if you guys want to. Move the next meeting a week back and then have that considered, or, I mean, maybe we could even consider this in January. To if, if the pickleball subcommittee needs more time. But that's just my idea of what, you know, we could try to collect more for feedback from the tennis key holders. See if there's ways to mitigate them. If, if there is, there is. If there isn't, then perhaps we. Just provide this proposal that the subcommittee has made to, to the, to the council and. See if they, what they, what they recommend we do based on that.
I have just a question of fact to understand this. We get our tennis key holders pay each, each year. With the way pickleball works, how would it work for people to be key holders if they're all just showing up and playing on a court? I don't understand how that works without reservations. So we'd be giving up the income of the key holders and taking away one of their courts. I'm, I'm all, I'm always think it's a good idea to do a trial, but. When, when there's so many impediments to getting this to work. I really wonder if we know ahead of time that these impediments are too big for this proposal to work. And if they are. Then I think we ought to really take a look at that seriously. But I do think if we're going to do anything, December's not possible. It's just too close. But I think at this point, you have, I would not be for a trial. I don't, I don't know what Bob is.
And I, I think there's a, a lot to learn because the details are, are difficult. Because if you say, let's let the court open in court six or one or whichever one you like, then you can get into all the courts. So you could be a tennis player, get into a pickleball court and take a tennis court with no key. So I go, well, wait a minute, that kills our whole thing, the way we do the key and keys for outside of Atherton and that. But you can do that and, and nothing would happen. And then that's going to make it look unfair and just cause more issues.
So is, is the solution?
The details, pardon?
Oh, I'm just wondering, is the solution then to charge the same key holder fee and then that would mitigate the tennis players' concerns about. You know, they're not paying kind of a fair share?
But why would someone buy a pickleball key if they can just show up and the game's going all the time? I don't see how that would work. The pickleball court will be opened by one person in the morning. People, as Betsy said, and I think Noah said. It'll be just a stream of groups, you know, changing. It's sort of round robin kind of play. I have a lot of trouble understanding how you're going to get the people, how you're going to know that the people who are playing pickleball in fact have a key to the court.
Isn't that the same problem that tennis has, that we don't know that if people have a key or not and?
Well, they have to get in the court.
Yeah, well, first the keys aren't locked, plus it is one person has to have the key.
Well, we should have the gates. I mean, if we're not, we'd need to have the gates locked. I mean, that if they're not locked, then we're, you know, the whole thing doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
They're, they're propped open a lot, a lot of the time. So, but it's, it's the same problem as we have now. So it's not anything different, I would say. We can, we can. If, if the concern is about the payment, then, you know, maybe we consider having during the trial, we have a three month. Or four month key fee in which those who want to. You know, get a key, they can for that, that trial period. If, if that's going to mitigate the concern, maybe we, we do that.
My concern just is, once it starts in the morning and people are coming in and out, is there any way to know who has a key and who doesn't have a key? I mean, it doesn't, the nature of the game seems to be that is very fluid and that's what people really love about it. But I don't think you can, I don't think you can have a sense that you're going to get very good key control when you've got sixteen people playing on a court.
So, some of the details have to be worked. I think so. It's fair and there's some control. I, I don't think just walking in the courts is a good idea. We had that way back and it wasn't good. And when we put some. Rules in and, and player capital, capital came in and made it a tennis center. Which is really what it is now with player capital. And I think that's worked pretty well. I just. Don't know what I'm, how I'm going to feel being next, in the next court next to pickleball with seventy. Decibels twenty-five feet away. Because that's going to be, I'm going to be twenty-five to fifty feet away with a seventy decibel. I don't know what that's like. I haven't played tennis next to. Pickleball. I've been on pickleball courts, but, and so I don't know what that's going to be like. And I think that's the, one of the big concerns of the key holders. And the people who play tennis and the player capital community. So Michael's still there, he can call me, he's calling.
So. So I, I think maybe if we bring this back in January, if the subcommittee can kind of work out as many of the issues as possible. Maybe talk to a few more key holders. I, I don't know if that's a reasonable request or not, but what do you? Tricia and Noah, what are you guys thinking about?
Yeah, I think.
Are we, are we, are we done? Is this the best we can do and?
No, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I think we can bring some additional data to it. I think it's quite clear. I, I, I'd expect if I found a tennis player that was only played tennis, they will. Not want pickleball. And I suspect if I went and found a bunch of pickleball players, they're going to want pickleball. And so, I, but I think we can gather that data, understand. You know, when these people are playing and if we can really see, you know, maybe the, the right times is. You know, are, are going in with a mindset of how do we make both these communities, you know. Happy, as, as close to happy as they can be. So that we can break both activities to the town of Atherton, rather than think of one as exclusive and what, you know. And the other not, you know, that we only can have one or the other. And so, you know, I think we should take it on to talk to more people in the community. More people in the community, um, including tennis key holders. But I think there's probably others that we, we could get and bring that. Data back to the next meeting. Um, but I, I do, I think we have to. Think of it as. You know? As much bringing. Another activity to these people to our town rather than. Infringing upon an activity that's, that's here today. Because I think both of those, they're not, they're both valid concerns, but they're both equally important. Um, and I'd like to make sure that we're addressing the concerns of all town of Atherton people.
I think.
What if we took? And played pickleball on one of the courts and had tennis players playing on the other? As a trial, as a mini trial? To get people who haven't played tennis with pickleball close by to just see what it's like. Yeah, I, I mean, uh, instead of do redoing the whole court and putting in all this thing, just get some of the, the players that have keys. And the player capital, people who take lessons, uh, uh, you can get a number of them. And say, let's just see what it's like. I'd like to be on the court next to the pickleball. Just say, you know, it's not a big deal. Or it's a really big deal. I have no idea.
Yeah, it's a good point because we do have sort of a state of the art tennis. Right now, I, I think it'd be great if they could coexist. And also, of course, we've got the neighbors in Felton Gables to think about as well. So.
I just, just thinking a way to move it, get some info more information.
Would you have to do that? You, can you put down temporary lining?
They do have, I mean. I've done it. I've done it in my driveway. It's not very fun, um, but there, you know, you, you can buy the tape. I, I, you know, maybe that's something, I don't know. I mean, it's tape, it's, it's tape, it's nets. And it's organization. So whether or not that could be accomplished before the January meeting, I don't know.
Well, I just get, you know, people are concerned about the noise. They really don't know what it's like.
It, it sticks for a number of days as it, once it rains now. But it will, it, it, it held on my driveway for a little while. So, uh, but I actually, I've known, uh, actually at Circus Club, they've, you know, for events, um, they've had. They've put down, they've lined the, the, the tennis courts, some of the tennis courts.
With tape, with tape.
And it lasts for, it lasts for a while.
But you, you know, to measure out exactly the dimensions, it's not, it's. It's not rocket science, but it's not as easy as you think.
But I like the idea of the interaction between pickleball players and tennis players because.
Exactly.
If, if it's gonna take away the enjoyment of tennis players who are kind of a known market and we run into that conflict early, that would be really good information to have.
Cause I think is one of the main resistance and there's always resistance to change too in, in people in general, but.
I mean, it is an idea of saying, hey, we're gonna plan a pickleball day. Whatever day, Saturday morning and reserve tenant, you know, court one or whatever, court six. I don't, I don't know which one. And we, you know, someone has to take, you know, get the nets and figure out the lining. It's possibility. I don't know.
I think it can be coordinated with, uh, player capital with Michael and he is, uh, five pro teachers now. That do all the lessons. And I think, uh, some of their students coupled with organizing with Michael, we could. Get feedback on that and find out whether it's something that, whoa, that's really amazing or, you know, it's not that bad.
So I, I wanted to ask Rick if it's okay, we hold on to this till January or if the. Counsel wanted to consider it in January.
So, uh, I think that you guys should do what you think is right here. I mean. And unless you've heard something different, Sally.
Um, no, I haven't seen it on the agenda. Look ahead and even. It might still be possible if you make a recommendation January that I can get it on the regular council meeting in January.
That's right. I think that's right. But although the, the meeting's late in January, I think our meeting is on the 11.
Oh, yeah.
Meeting's on the 18th.
So it probably is not possible, but yeah. I, I think it would be fine if it goes in February.
Do what you need to do and. You need to, and it's not clear to me that there's a majority one way or the other in terms of a recommendation. There's clearly some ideas and I think there's, the discussion's been good, I think. And. One really big issue that's become very clear to me is pickleball is a culture. And there, there needs to be a format that makes that culture work. I'm just not completely clear. How much, but like, how much of a format there has to be, but like my question about two versus four courts. I, I understand. From both what Noah said and from what the public comments we got, that, you know, if you don't have enough courts, you don't. Create the framework for the culture and. And it just doesn't work. It, it really isn't useful. Whether that can really fit into the program that Atherton has. Uh, I mean, I, I heard what Frank said about the, the handball court. But I think getting more than two courts over there would be pretty tough and it's gonna be expensive because you gotta tear down the handball court. So. You know, whether it really fits is or not is, is a big question that I, I'm sure the council will discuss.
You could do it, you could do it the same way that the tennis courts were built and the Little Ling was built and. In, in Atherton in the X number of years and that is that the tennis courts were paid for by donations. That's, that's why there's tennis courts there. Ballparks there because of donations.
It's the reason you wanted to do a trial is to see how much demand there was and see. Frankly, what the reaction is from Felton Gables, because I think that's, that's not.
Yeah, because if you raise the money.
But it's important.
If you raise the money and build it and find out later.
Yeah, that's the last thing we want to do is. Build something when we don't know demand is. And that was the point of the trial, which was.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to borrow some money when you.
Or, or find out you built it in the wrong place.
Yeah, yeah. But you, but will you still donate?
Yeah, you donate and you built in the wrong place and please donate again so we can build in the right place. Okay. So I think we've talked enough about this. We have, uh, two other. Regular agenda items to consider. So, uh, for, for right now, I'm gonna schedule this for, uh, January unless you guys tell us to put it in December, but. Uh, Sally and I will keep kind of a January placeholder for pickleball. So the next item.
Question on, let me just ask from the January. We'd have to do all of the investigation, everything between now and January. And I wonder how realistic that is with everybody's holiday plans. Perhaps it would be better to put it into February so that there's enough time to contact the tennis players, talk to player capital. Really be able to reach people to, because one problem we have here is it not sufficient information. So. You know, especially because they're rainy months. I think it would probably make more sense to bring this up into the February meeting. So the subcommittee has more time to. To really put this together in a meaningful way.
We could always move to February if we don't get it done by January.
What, what we'll do is when, when Sally and I build the agenda, we'll check with you guys in terms of how ready you are. In, in January, and I think we're gonna meet in the second week of January because of the, the New Year's. So it, it will be a little later in January than usual, a little later in the month than usual. If you guys aren't ready, we'll push it another month. If you guys are ready, we'll do it then. That's.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem. Um, circulation plan, 100%. Sally, go, go right ahead.
So Rick Navarro is here on the call. Hopefully he's still on it.
Thank you, Rick, for staying on.
I'm, I'm still here.
Um, so this is your chance before this goes to the city council for the studies. Um, to give any last final comments on the, on the plan. And Rick is here to go over anything and answer any questions.
So I, I guess maybe to frame it, um, since we last talked, Rick has. What has changed, say, between the 95% plan and the 100% of anything of note that, uh, the committee should be aware?
No, uh, maybe I can just go over, uh, just an overview of the importance we are doing. So. Sally, may I share my screen?
Uh, yes.
So let's see. Okay. So we did receive the 100% plans from the designer. And so, yeah, briefly, I want to go over, uh, the improvements that we are proposing for, for the park. As you can see here, these are some of the more prominent features. This is Watkins. Uh, up, up here and this is the, um, the park entrance. So what we are doing is, um, we're doing a lot of. Decomposed granite paths. Um, these are shown, uh, in yellow. We are doing, um, pavers. Uh, these are shown in, in the dark pink. There is some. Sidewalk that we are, uh, providing and basically that's just a regular, uh, concrete sidewalk. Uh, and there's a little bit here at the entrance and there's a little bit at the, at the exit. Uh, and as you can see, uh, you know, on, on the other side of the park near the exit, we also have, um. DG, uh, DG paths, um, throughout the park. The, the light pink that you see, this is basically asphalt. Some of it is existing, some of it i- is new. We tried to save some money to try to. You know, u- utilize as much of the asphalt as we can. That's existing. But yeah, there, there is some new, uh, in this area, uh, as you can see here as well. And, um, again, there's some, uh. In the, uh, let's see, the pavers, uh, here. Now we have, um. Uh, we are proposing three different pedestrian crossings. These are raised pedestrian crossings. There's one at this location, one at this location. And, uh, one at this location. These are, you know, like I said, that they're raised, uh, so that. We have, uh, the, the crosswalk at the top of a, a raised platform essentially. And then we have, uh. The truncated domes on either side, um, that, that you see throughout town. So that's. The, the, um. The, uh, the, the hardscape improvements. Some planting, these are the planting plans. So I'm not. Much of a, you know, I, I don't really know plants, but essentially a lot of the plants that we are providing, uh, border the new decomposed granite. So this is the new decomposed granite. And this, these, this is the paver area and then this is decomposed granite here. So a lot of the. New planting that we are doing, uh, we are proposing, uh, is along, um, the edge of that, uh, the, uh. The decomposed granite as well as we all, we're also. Doing some new planting, uh, along the perimeters of the, um, the circulation roadway. As you can see here, so. One thing that I wanted to point out was, um, let's see, going back to. This, we did move the, um. The picnic area, uh, out from under the, uh, the big oak tree. So we moved it, uh, more. To the south and there used to be, we were looking at a. A DG pathway under that big oak tree, but we moved it just because, uh. Of liability concerns, uh, under that oak tree. So. Let's see, what else can I share with you? Um. We are doing some improvements, uh, at the entrance and at the exit. Uh, we are doing some, um, ADA, uh, ramps and again truncated domes that we have to. Provide along Watkins, um, both at the entrance and, um, at the exit.
What are the blue colored squares?
Yeah, that's basically, um, again, it's just. Concrete. It's just basically sidewalk. So n- normal sidewalk. So we are proposing. It here, uh, and on either side of the, um, of, of the exit. Okay, um, so that's essentially the, in a nutshell, the, those are the improvements that we are proposing. I do have a schedule moving forward. Here's our proposed schedule. We are looking to go to council at their study session on December 7. And then if we get any comments, any final comments from you folks and from council. We could address all those, uh, before we go to council in January for final approval. And authorization to advertise. So we're looking to advertise in, in January, open bids in February and then, um, award the project in March. Uh, we would begin construction in April and it looks like, uh, may construction finish sometime in September if. Maybe August, September is what I, what I'm, um, anticipating. So that is our schedule, uh, right now. And like I said, if you guys have any comments, uh. We still have an opportunity to address any comments that any additions you guys might have. Prior to advertising, uh, the project. So I do have one, uh. Would like feedback from you all. On, um. One of the items that we are looking at, um, this, this project requires us to. Install signage because we, uh, from the funding sources, we do, we are. Receiving funds from, uh, Santa Clara County and also from State of California. And, um. The, let's see, let me look at here. Funding signs. Right now on the plans, what we are, um. Here are the signs that we are proposing. And let me blow this up. It's, you should have received a copy of this. But, uh, essentially what they will be saying is a project made possible in part by funding from, from the Santa Clara. So. Where we're, we were trying to mimic the, uh, existing signs that are in the park. And so I know some of the signs of the park are on, uh. On boulders and I wanted to open that up so you could see some, some of them. So something like this. But also some are also on, um, I believe, let's see. On, on walls. So I guess that's one, uh, direction I'd like to have is whether or not. It would be preferred to be on something like a boulder or if we just want to put it on a, um, you know, on a post. You know, um, so that's one, um, thing I'd like to see what you guys want. Uh, want to see in terms of the funding signs. Again, we have to install them as part of the grant that we have. So, um. So at this point, I guess, uh, if you guys have any questions or, um. Want any additional information, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
So any questions from the committee?
Yeah, this is Frank Merrill. Um, Rick, I have three questions. One is, can you go back to the first drawing? And maybe not the first one, the second one where you had the hexagonal shaped things and you had C1 and arrows and such. Let's see if that's the one.
Yes.
Now it was another one. It was more complicated, more, more, more detailed than that. Nope, that's not it.
Okay, hold on.
There was one, one overall that had. I was the one you put on right after you put the colored walkway, the green colored walkway picture on. Um, yeah, that's, that's more likely. Okay, that one right there.
Yeah.
Okay, um, two things. One is, uh, am I looking there? If I blow this up and I'm looking at VO1. Right, uh, it, it's about where the old, no, VO, VO1 over on your right. Um, about, uh, nope, uh, I'm sorry. It's on the right side of the. Of your, keep going down, down a little farther, right to, to go to your right, go to your right a little farther, right in there. Is that the, is that pointing out the original fountain location or is that something else? Is that just a plant?
That is so VO, we are, it's a plant.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Like, my question is, is the, is the original fountain location going to be? Is going to remain? Is it going to be viable or should we assume we the? Uh, Park Foundation assume that we can't re redo the fountain in that location? That's the first question I have. Uh, the second question is when you go down to the exit. When you go down to the exit, um, there's the original gate that's, that is, is on a stand there alongside of it. And it looks about where you say vehicular concrete. Um, and it looks about where you say vehi- vehicular concrete. Is that, is the original gate there, or, or is it indicated somewhere?
Um, the original gates, we will have to relocate them, uh, and so because we are.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the original, original gate. I'm talking about the one from the eighteen sixties. The gate that's there by itself, as you drive past it on your right-hand side. It's on a concrete pad and, uh, back underneath the trees more or less. And I don't know, like, I don't see that indicated.
Okay, let me, I, I will look at that, but a lot of the gates that are, you know, at the entrance and exits, we are just relocating them.
No, you, you could throw, you could throw those away, I'm, that, that, that's not, uh, I'm not looking to save those. I'm just talking about the original gate that we, we, we set off, we set off on a, on a concrete pad in the seventies to save it. But, um, and the third question I have is the signs that you're talking about, the signage for the City of Santa Clara. That's the buy-off, that's the money from the county, Santa Clara for the scan for stuff, yeah, the scan for stuff and whatnot. Okay, so are those, are those permanent signs, or are they during construction signs?
They, they are permanent signs.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, alright, so let me look at the exit here, so I understand which one you're, um.
Straight ahead, back, there you go, keep going inside, keep going inside, right there, that one, the big one. Nope, you, you went by it, there he is, too, slow down, you're going way too fast. It's, it's, you, you were, you were, you look at it as you look inside the exit, not those gates. Turn around, go ninety degrees backwards.
By the Gilmore House.
Yeah, that's correct, there you go. Um, go back, turn it around the other way. Keep going, keep going, keep going, that one right there, that one right there. Is that one gonna have to move?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, I, I'll, I'll double check that, I, I don't believe so, but I will double check.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from committee members?
Yeah, I've got a question. Um, Rick, uh, we've gotten funding, I, I think that there are two grants here. One comes from Stanford.
Right.
Maybe originating from the state of California, I'm not sure. And the other, I think, comes from CCAG, which is Santa Clara County. Um, we've gotten funding, not from Stanford before, to my knowledge, but definitely from CCAG. For all kinds of roadwork that we've done and, uh, different things that we've done. And I'm not, we've never put up a sign that said funding came from them, so this is the first I've heard of that.
Me too.
Yeah, the, yeah, so, yes, we have two funding sources here. One is, um, yeah, um, Santa Clara County. And, um, and then the other one is from State of California. Um, I think, um, their Department of Recreation, I think, is wh- where it is. But, um, yeah, the, uh. Okay, let, let, I'll double check on those, but definitely I know the county language in the, um. In the, in the grant, the county language has that. I gotta double check on the state grant, um, but I know, like I said, the, the county has that.
If you could refer that to us, where that requirement is stated, that would be helpful, cause.
Okay, I will never, I will forward that to you. I'll forward to Sally, and, um, she can forward on to you guys.
Great, thank you.
Just one question, uh, there's clearly a lot more DG. It's, uh, what's the increase in DG in the park compared to current?
I did want to mention that, um, part of our master plan is to make every path DG. I think that's why we're just doing the whole thing DG, but Rick can speak to that.
You know, I don't know the exact square footage at this point, but I can get that information to you folks as well.
And, and do we have, do we have good feeling about, I've heard decomposed granite is, is. Costs a fair amount to keep in good shape, um, from a maintenance perspective. Maybe I'm, I've heard wrong, but as clearly compared to concrete or asphalt, it's a lot more. Um, it just starts deteriorating from a looks perspective. Looks great the first day, and then drops off, do we, do we have any perspective on that?
I don't have, uh, you know, maintenance experience on, on DG. Uh, all I can, uh, refer to would be my experience on some of the DG paths that I have, uh, walked on, uh, in different parks. I think some of the DG, if you do put the stabilizer in. Uh, and, um, this is what we are doing, uh, on this project. Is it, it becomes a lot tighter, and it binds a little bit better. But maybe, I, I don't know, Sally has any additional information or experience with, with DG. But, uh, like I said, sometimes, some DG, you, uh, con- um, contractors don't add the binder. And it's just fairly loose, but some of the DG I've seen, uh, when you do put the binder in, it does, uh, tighten up a little bit more. Uh, for the park.
I know that, yeah, for, for the, uh, parts of DG in the event garden, um, after storms, I know our maintenance, um, crew. Has to fill in some of the DG, so I know there's yearly maintenance on the DG. Um, I'm assuming that was taken into account when the master plan said to.
It's what I'm, uh, yeah, I just love, hopefully, that we're thinking about maintenance costs alongside. And we're making sure that we're budgeting for those.
Yeah, the, the asphalt and a lot of the path around the park is in getting in bad condition, cause tree roots are pushing it up. So i- if there weren't the tree roots, then, you know, maybe asphalt would be the more lo- good economic, long-term. Uh, path, but because of the roots, I, I think DG might be, might be better, uh.
The other thing that I think is a big issue with that is that it's permeable, water will go through it. And I know that's a, been a big thing in certain places, so that may be another reason why we're using it.
Yeah, I personally think DG looks great and works great. I just want to make sure that we're making sure that we have budget, that we don't assume it's install, and that there's no, uh, there's no maintenance to it. Cause there, there, it's not just people, it's actually putting down new DG, um, you know, a certain amount of top on it.
Agree.
Yep, thanks.
Are there any other questions? One, one thing I wanted to ask is, are the adults in, in this plan, Rick? Such as the fountain, and I think there was another adult for the entrance.
No, well, we decided the fountain, we were not, uh, doing the fountain as part, part of this. Um, yeah, the adults, uh, now, we need to finalize those, I need to finalize those with Robert. Uh, we need, uh, he and I need to sit down and look at the, the budget and see what we need to do in, with regards to the adults. Because we are looking at a project right now, that's about, uh, a little bit over one million, almost one point one million. So I, we need to, uh, definitely look at that budget and determine, you know, what we need to do in terms of the adults. And, uh, we should have that information, uh, when we go to the council study session.
Okay, so you, you might have to do a little more trimming to get under budget, um, it sounds like.
Well, what the, you know, what I was gonna suggest is, you know, uh, some adults that we could do would be the furnishings. You know, we do have some of the furnishings, and those would be some things that we don't necessarily have to install now. You know, uh, but, you know, we, we can come back later and do it. So, uh, if, if we don't have the budget for it, so it, those could be adults. Uh, again, the, the, the improvements for the entrances. Now, we, we did cut back on a lot of it. Uh, we, we were just gonna relocate the, you know, the fences at the entrance, so that's not a lot of money at this point. But, uh, again, um, we, we have to look at the budget and, uh, try to determine what we can do, uh, in terms of, uh, the adults.
Okay, and, and my preference is for the boulder to put the sign on, if, if you're asking. Um, so let me open it up to, uh, public comment, if there's any. Uh, I don't see any, unless there's some in the room. Uh, seeing none, why don't we move to any final comments from the, um, committee?
None for, none for me.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, Rick, then, uh, you have a good direction then from, from us?
Yeah, if, if you can, uh, yeah, any, any other co- uh, comments on whether or not, you know, you want the sign on boulders or. Um, you know, just, and if you guys have any other comments at all on, on the plans, please send them to Sally. And then she can relate them, re- relate them to me, so we can address them before we advertise it. And I'll get some of these, uh, you know, um, questions, uh, responses to some of these questions that you guys asked. I'll send those to, to Sally.
Okay, and then you're presenting, you're presenting December seventh to the council, then?
Yes.
Okay, so, well, i- so anyone on the committee, if you want to get your comments in, in the next couple of weeks, then that's probably the best time.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, moving on to, uh, five C is the, uh, plan for the, uh, plantings. And the, uh, BrightView.
This is, um, uh, BrightView came and updated the proposal for the event garden since our last meeting. Cause we have comments and people. Um, so they have updated their proposal, um, and Kevin is here with BrightView to speak on the proposal.
Good evening, everyone, thank you Sally for introducing me. Um, so obviously, this is the, uh, final proposal, uh, that we sent over to Sally with the updated plant palette. And plant size considerations. Um, so if we want to just start from top to bottom, and feel free to jump in with questions. Or we can kind of go over everything in more detail at the end. But, uh, I'll give a summary, kind of line by line here. So, uh, the first step in this project, uh, would be the demolition and soil improvement, uh, plan. And, uh, when I say first step, really, uh, that scope will be, uh, kind of intermingled with the, the irrigation. Uh, repair and, and coverage scope as well. Those things, as far from an efficiency standpoint, those two things will probably be taking place at once. But, uh, from the demolition and soil improvement, uh, we're looking at removing any, uh, current top. Uh, litter material, uh, basically going through and de-weeding, rubbing the area. Uh, getting any bark that's in there, uh, and allowing us to have the soil exposed. So that we can rototill some, uh, organic compost, but really a, uh, soil amendment. That will improve the overall drainage of the area. Uh, one of the first things Sally mentioned was that that area, uh, certainly in the rainy season. And with some of the irrigation problems that I'll discuss in just a moment. Uh, that area was, uh, uh, pointed out to us when we took over the site, that there's some drainage issues. So, uh, the soil amendment, not only improving the quality of the soil and nutrients that are there. But really allowing that area to, uh, properly dry out, uh, as, as best as possible. So, in order to get that, uh, soil amendment kind of worked into the soil. And some of this is mentioned, uh, directly in the, uh, construction notes from the original installation, which Sally provided our team. Uh, and they, they recommend, I think it's six to eight inches of rototilling when the, when the project was first installed. So we'd be doing something similar to get the, uh, soil, you know, back to what it needs to be. Um, so that's what we have in the first section there. We've got our labor hours, the equipment operator, uh, general dump for, uh, any off-haul, uh, litter and debris that we clean up. Uh, and then you've got the horticultural soil blend. Um, and I do think there's an opportunity to do a soil sampling or a soil test. That we would send to the lab, get some feedback on what type of soil we have. Uh, again, this goes towards addressing the drainage problem, uh, in addition to the fact that, you know, a lot of this plant material really suffered. Um, for, I think, a multitude of reasons. But, uh, I think there's still the opportunity to do that soil, uh, sample and send that off to the lab. And that would give us a little bit better feedback on what that, that ten cubic yards of material that we would be working into the soil. I know from experience tha- that that will do what I've assessed are the, are the, kind of from the anecdotal evidence and what we're seeing on site. Will improve that area, but we can get a little more specific, uh, with that, uh, soil sample. So, um, any questions so far with the demolition and soil improvement portion of this? Okay, uh, moving on to the irrigation coverage and inspection and repair. Uh, so anyone that's familiar with this site, and if you walk by it, uh, you know, at any point in time. You can already see the irrigation drip tubing, uh, exposed on the surface. Uh, we have a number of breaks that, since I assessed the site and, uh. And, um, wrote this proposal originally. Uh, I don't know that all of the drip irrigation concerns have, have been addressed. Uh, simply because it's a little more involved than, you know, maybe you would think. But, uh, the plans that were given to me for the original installation called for subsurface drip. Uh, and obviously, we have hoses now exposed on the surface, and that could be due to compacting soils. It could be due to flooding and poor drainage over time, again, increasing the compaction of the soil. Um, it could be that it wasn't installed properly, uh, when it was first done. Uh, because that, uh, that drip irrigation that it calls out for in the plans is meant to be buried anywhere from, uh. Four to six inches, uh, the six inches, I think, would be better suited to what, uh, we have on site. As well as, uh, you know, with the change to a five gallon plant, uh, having those drip hoses, uh, six inches down in the soil. Uh, is not, uh, as much of a problem for a larger plant with a larger root ball. We're still able to get that, uh, plant pro- properly irrigated or for establishment. So the irrigation plan, uh, really is to correct the zones that we looked at. That are gonna be getting new plant material. Uh, it's approximately, it's a le- less than forty-five hundred square feet. Uh, if, if I'm, you know, kind of rounding the number, uh, a little bit less than forty-five hundred square feet. So that's not the entire event garden space. It's really just where we're doing the plant infill. That's what's covered in this irrigation upgrade, and, and that would, that would require us to take a look at the whole system, each individual area. Um, and getting that drip back to a subsurface drip, um, which is what it calls for. And then, uh, my last point on the subsurface drip, uh, you know, it's, it's a really good, uh, way to. Reduce the amount of rodent activity that you will typically see on any site that has drip irrigation. Uh, lots of rodents, squirrels, uh, raccoons find a way to chew on those hoses, expose water. Break, uh, you know, different parts of the section of the system, we lose pressure, and then over time you lose your plant material. Uh, so the subsurface does help reduce that, that as a factor. Um, so all of that in, is included in the irrigation coverage, inspect and repair. And, uh. Moving on to the planting and the mulch. So, uh, again, this is pretty bare bones. We're just looking at new plant material, replacing what has failed on site. With, uh, plants from the, the provided plant palette from the original installation. Uh, with the intention of, of ki- what we're using in this current plant palette that you see here. It's also, uh, reflects what's still on site and seems to be doing well in other areas. So we're working with plant material that regardless of drainage and irrigation problems, uh, soil condition problems. Uh, we're working with plants that are still, uh, you know, doing pretty well on site, or even thriving in, in certain areas where the system's, you know, working properly. So, uh, all of the plants that are shown here in a five gallon, that's where we can readily find the available material. Uh, the first, or I should say, the second plant material, the Iris de Glaziana, uh, that's a California native. Uh, but those are rhizomatic, and they spread from their root system. So i- it's very typical that we find those in one gallons, um, not as easy to find in a five gallon. So that's why we've kept that one there, is, is only a one gallon. Um, but here you've got the labor for, uh, plant layout, getting everything properly spaced. Everything here is based on a three to four foot spacing, uh, which is what it calls out for. And not only in the planting notes, but, uh, also what is reflected by what the, uh, plant material here requires. Well, once it's established and reached maturity. So, um, the plant counts are based off of that forty-three, forty-four hundred square feet. Uh, and then that spacing to get full coverage, uh, from what you see listed here. Um, included in that, uh, we have the thirty yards of mulch. Again, that is to cover the areas that we are planting and infilling. So if there was additional mulch to finish the, uh, the entire event garden space. So that everything looks consistent when we're done, that would need to be adjusted, that number there would need to be adjusted. But the thirty yards, as I said, would be to cover that forty-four hundred, uh, square foot for the project. And then the last line item we have here is with regards to drainage. Um, and I did provide a, you know, a rough mock-up of what we are proposing to improve the drainage of this area. Um, when Sally sent me the the documents from the original installation, I did get a page uh labeled L for the grading and drainage plan. Uh, however, that was the only page with regards to any grading or drainage done on the original installation. And it looks like that page uh.
Did we lose him?
Hello, Kevin?
Well, my lost Kevin.
Hello, Kevin?
Yeah, let me uh.
Yeah, we still have the slide. So I mean, it's pretty. He identified existing drainage connected to the drain outlet. And then additional, they're planning additional drainage in yellow. Because the problem with the um, the one basin where the red line is, is that it's just has pretty poor drainage, even at at the in this oh, this overall um picture of the park, you can tell that that's the one planter that really doesn't have anything left. Um, so I guess we'll see if he comes back on, but.
Yeah, he's a, he's getting reconnected, Sally.
Okay.
He got booted off.
No problem.
The budget for this, is it something the town, I if if someone can uh remind me, is it the town that will pay for it or is it the foundation that's planning to pay for it?
No, the town will be paying for this.
Foundation built it, turned it over to the town, and uh it's their responsibility now.
Okay. I am curious about the grand total.
I'm about ready to fall over when I see the grand total.
I see a lot of subtotals, but I didn't see, I was waiting for him to get to the bottom of the page. Thank you, Sally.
Total sixty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents. We'll most likely have to bring that down some.
Yeah, I think last month, the proposal was almost fifty-five thousand. Um, I guess the price went up a bit. A little over ten percent.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so I was just reviewing the drainage with you all and I saw that uh somebody had pulled up the the mock-up that I had done.
I'm pulling it up right now.
Briefly sort of uh explaining that the design plan that I reviewed uh prior to putting together the the proposal here, I I could not find any exact details on the drainage itself. If there was drainage installed, uh, I could see that grading had been done to create uh sort of a valley uh that worked throughout the the space, the event garden there. Um, and I I did locate a drain inlet on site and which is marked there with the red star. Uh, and it appeared that there was drainage working its way up from that drain inlet. Uh, but no real evidence that I could tell that we had drainage moving water from the uh planter you see on the right, which we've marked with the uh yellow uh drainage. Um, so, and that was uh the area that was indicated that seemed to flood a fair amount, uh especially in the rainy season. Uh, so we wanted to address that here, uh, and what you see is uh kind of branches of new drainage that work uh for not all the way from the edge of the planter, but working water from the middle of the plant to the of the planter uh in between the trees, the the oak trees that we have installed, um, all of which have deep root bubblers. Um, but do not like to be in uh standing water uh during our hottest months of the year. So there could be, that could be one factor with the the health of the trees. I know we've lost some trees in this area. Uh, again, reflected in the the replacements on the planting plan. But um, this here shows the in yellow, the new drainage and where we would tap into uh if our our indication is correct, that we have that drainage working its way from the red star up. Um, if if we are unable to locate a drainage uh uh pipe in that area marked in red, uh, we would have the ability to make our own connection to that red star from that planter uh on the right-hand side uh that had the the most uh of the drainage issues. So uh, this is like a rough markup. Again, you know, what we find in the field when we actually break ground is not always what we anticipate. So there is room for uh any adjustments here, but again, that's that was the plan was to move water from that planter into that drainlet uh drain inlet.
So Kevin, are the drain, what are the, what are the drains? Is it, is this a French drain arrangement or?
So this uh what the product that I uh plan on using on this was a uh NDS flexible uh four-inch pipe that has uh, it's basically wrapped in a sleeve that has its own uh insulation and water wicking material uh wrapped around the pipe and in the sleeve. So it's actually a a pipe that does not require backfill with drain rock or any of that uh like a typical, a typical French drain would require. Uh, this is you dig a trench, you put this in the ground, you make sure you've got the proper elevation change to move water in the desired uh direction, and then you backfill with your soil. So limited impact to the uh soil conditioning or other any other than the trenching required to get this installed at the proper depth and at the at the right uh grade. Other than that trench, you know, you're not expanding that trench to accommodate any drain rock going in the the trench itself for for kind of a backfill. Uh, so limited uh disturbance on the roots uh that we have there. Um, and it's a pretty easy product to install. So uh the bulwark of that uh of that installation will be tapping into the drain inlet itself uh and making sure we have proper elevation change. But if I'm looking at the grading uh that that's provided on the original sheet, uh, we we already have uh some good fall going towards that drain. So.
And and how far is that below the the surface of the ground?
The the uh.
So it it's a four-inch pipe, I assume it's and and you said it, it's got a fabric around it, so it's probably perforated. It it's taking the water as the water is excessive in the soil.
Right, so the the pipe itself uh is four inches and then it's it's sort of insulated by another uh maybe inch and a half in radius uh of this water wicking uh kind of backfill, which is, and then that is all encased in a sleeve uh that that uh keeps soil out, but obviously keeps the insulation uh up on the pipe and that that wicks water into the pipe. It is a perforated pipe. Um, and now the the elevation of installation, like how how uh uh the depth that we're going to be installing it. Uh, I would uh, I'm trying to get water away from the trees as much as possible. Um, so that we don't, we do want deep root watering like they have uh the intended, the way that irrigation systems uh set up. But we don't want that water standing there in the hot months. Um, so we want to get that water moving out and uh those trees twenty-four inch box installed, we would want to have the the ear the drainage pipe that we would be installing anywhere from eighteen inches to twenty-four inches in the soil uh while still having the the uh desired grade change to move that water to the drain inlet. Um, so, you know, it it depends on what we have on site and the the length that we need to be moving that water, but the gray change does not need to be that significant. We're talking about, you know, an inch to two inches uh with the the length uh of of drain pipe that we're talking about. So um, I would say anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four inches on the depth of that that pipe.
Are there any questions from the committee about the um the plan, landscaping plan?
None for me.
Uh, are there uh any public comments? Seeing none, are there any um comments from the committee? Or are we all pooped out?
None for me.
Okay, um. Yeah, I don't know if uh Sally, to have, is this uh, is this within budget? Just wondering, I I I can't remember if we, if this was part of kind of the park and rec kind of budget for the town uh this fiscal year or not.
We budgeted approximately fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, so I will have to work with the public works director to see what we can we can do on this.
Okay.
Um. That's all I can say right now.
Okay.
That we wanted to get your feedback on it before, you know, we might have to get rid of some things.
If if I may, um, Sally, I don't know the way that it's set up within uh our contract with Brightview. Uh, if we have already budgeted any type of irrigation work, uh, because we the way we operate at Brightview, we've got, you know, different divisions that specialize in the maintenance, the irrigation. I manage our in- installation enhancement division. Um, so if there are opportunities to move scope portions of the scope of work into another budget or bucket that you that you already have, uh, we could potentially eliminate the irrigation portion of this from the the project and have our is our irrigation team take that over and try to work with you to to keep this within, you know, what what you have budgeted. So.
Yeah, there's a that there's not money in buckets for irrigation like that. Not to do installs like that.
Okay.
Actually.
Okay, if if there's no more comments from the committee, um, thank you, Kevin and Steve. We probably should move on to the next item, five.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for sticking around to a little over two hours. Um. Okay, so item four is basically what we covered in, am I looking at the right agenda here?
Yeah, so it was circulation, which you're up to date on that, um, pickleball, which you're.
Which we're up to date. We're, it's the previous three items, so.
Um, so at some point, it's the preview violation and review. So um it just depends on when you, I think at the last meeting, you did say when you want them to come back. Um. I need to see when they started. You might want to do like a yearly review, but yeah. I'm not sure who took on that one, but.
Uh, that was um Walt. He wanted to have uh once every six months and so maybe instead of uh December, since it's only two weeks away, uh ma- maybe we'll we'll schedule it for January instead.
Um, that's all for those.
Okay. Were there any uh comments from the committee or public comment? If not, we'll move on to the next item.
Um, so yeah, so the foundation report. Frank, do you have anything to say about the foundation update?
It helps, it helps if I turn my uh, my can, I mean, my, what do you call them? Mike, um, we have nothing to to uh discuss now. Everything's up to date. Um, and we were waiting to find out about the uh circulation plan and such. And uh, so no, I have nothing else to report now.
Okay, let's move on to the uh, any questions or comments for Frank? If not, let's move on to the uh park going on's report.
Playing it up right now.
Okay.
This was included in the packet, um, but some of the things that happened last month. Um, Brightview has done a lot of dead of shrubs around the North Meadow. Up a lot of the uh foliage around the park. We finished uh the last two courts. The clay court got refurbished. Um. September twenty-seventh to October first, we had, we held a large fundraiser at the North Meadow. Um, are there any questions? On report.
Any comments or public comments? Seeing none, I guess we can move on to the next item. Park event.
Also included in your packet. Um, as well as the financial report. So if anybody has any questions, I don't really have anything to add for those.
I see that we sold four permits for photos.
Oh, see? Remember when we discussed if we even do this? I guess we do. Um, I did wanna um not make no well, well, before the meeting's over. Um, that starting in the new year, we're going to be meeting in person only. It will not be hybrid. Um, and um, I did want to say that um.
Will the public be able to attend hy- uh remotely or they also have to be in person?
I was told by um HR today is that it will the end of the state rules will be done at the end of the year and public meetings have to be in person. That's what I was told today, but if it changes, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Um. Uh, so the job description for the facilities manager went out last month, and that has closed. So in the next few weeks, um, the town will be interviewing a potential uh and that will include the park. Um, so now there'll be one person that's in charge of all of the town facilities. Um, so I'm assuming this person will be shadowing me at a future meeting and I can introduce them, but that won't happen probably for another couple of months, but I wanted to bring that up. Um, I think that's all for me.
Uh, at least, um, Sally, I have a question. Um.
Yeah.
If if a certain wayward person who seems to be on the road periodically has to, can he, can he, can this certain individual call in and zoom a meeting, or do I have to be in person every time?
I will, I will find out for you.
Okay, is I'm geograph- geographically challenged at times. I'm uh living two lives. I'm living one life in Southern California and one life in Northern California. All because of, all because of romance. So that's what happens.
Okay, yeah, I'll find out for you.
Thank you. All right.
Um, the, on the budget, Sally, um, I was wondering if the uh, the uh finance group could uh include the two years of actuals, a last, last two years of actuals as we've requested in the future.
Sally, just while you're looking, um, my understanding on the issue of in-person versus hybrid meetings is that when the governor's declaration of emergency ends, which I don't think is the end of the year, right? So you should check. I think it's the end of February that um, the members of committees such as the council and such as this committee need to attend in person, although there are exceptions uh for, you know, if you're traveling or if you're in, uh, if you're sick. Uh, and that those exceptions, I believe, are once or twice a year. Uh, I didn't know that applied to the public, so you should check just to make sure.
I'll confirm.
Well, I could, I could be sick twice a year and I could be traveling twice a year. That'd give me four meetings I could miss. Well, I could, I could be sick twice a year and I could be traveling twice a year. That'd give me four meetings I could miss.
No, no, I think it's a total. I'm not exactly sure what the exception is, whether it's one or two. I think it's two, but I'm not sure, but Sally will find out. And it's apprehensive of all the different excuses.
Yeah, you can, and this is, and pre the pandemic, you could only miss two meetings as well, so that that's not really a change. So I pulled up the financial report, so Alex, do you see if they added what you were talking about?
No, it's two years of the past actuals, which is more critical than what was budgeted. Just to see that what was spent the last two years. That's what we had asked for before and they hadn't updated it yet with the new two years of actuals.
Okay, so I will get that. We're getting closer, but you're not there.
Thank you, Sally, thank you. Any other, any questions from the committee or any comments about the budget? Seeing none, can move on to. While we skipped the park revenue report, but is there any questions about the park revenue report? Any comments?
It's pretty old by now, because we're meeting.
Yeah, we're almost in November, yeah. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the last item, future agenda topics. Anything you guys want to propose for a December meeting in two weeks? I'll probably have to meet with Sally soon to get that agenda squared away. We'll probably talk about the Knox Play School if if. If Susan is ready to present to us and I don't know if there's anything else.
That meeting might be a short meeting.
Yeah, could be short, which is fine. Okay, so if not, thank you guys for sticking with us for for two and a half plus hours. I'll see you in a couple of weeks and hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
I second. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Bye-bye.